Praise for our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us together this day. Please help us make sound decisions and direct us towards the accomplishment of our goals. We pray that you bless and protect all of our people, of our community, guide us on the path to unity and harmony, to serve you and your people. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's 5:30 on Monday, July 17, 2017, and I'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Fish.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections? Andrew Bremseth, our city administrator?
Yes, Your Honor, members of the council. Under the old business section, we have an update on RDC tax credits listed. And since that entails a legal opinion that we haven't seen, we are going to do that in closed session towards a threatened litigation matter and get advice from our legal counsel as to what that looks like, and then we'll come back and give that information to the public when the time is appropriate.
Thank you. Are there any other additions or additions to the agenda?
Anthony? I'd like to add just three sort of small things. Ordinance on use of drones within city limits.
So it's a new, you want a new discussion under the new business?
Yeah. And then I'd like to discuss whether you should have a moratorium on special assessment projects.
Moratorium on special assessments?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Number three?
And then how do we set up crime neighborhood watch programs?
Crime neighborhood watch networks?
Yeah.
We'll put those on our new business?
Thank you very much. You're a good man, despite what people think.
Thank you, Anthony. I appreciate that.
Any other additions or corrections to the agenda?
I had a question for the future, but I've had a couple inquiries on dog parks again, and I just wondered if we could get an update in the future on where we might be on that discussion.
Okay. Just someone wants to talk on that. At least introduce it for next meeting on number four on your new business. Anything else?
I don't have anything else.
You'll move to...
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries.
Under number one, committee of the whole recap, we met at 2:00. The city council met at the police department. As a committee of the whole, we discussed for three hours a strategic plan. I think it's safe to say we had a productive, positive meeting. It's a first step to that process. I think we recognize that there's more to come, and I think we'll be consolidating the information and the ideas that we had in that meeting, and Mike will put that forward, and I think that'll be available to the public. But stay tuned, because there's much more work to be done. Anyone have anything else to add?
An accurate description of our meeting?
Just thank Mike Carville for leading the discussion. Did a professional job.
Thank you, Mike.
Is that a motion, Anthony?
Yep.
I'll second, Your Honor.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mike. There are no public hearings this evening under a warning of bids. Item number one, we will need a resolution awarding the bid for public improvement 9698, which is the library construction services. Are there any questions? Aaron, would you like to...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Dylan Larson, and I'm with Benz Thompson, Rito, the architecture firm who is working with Aaron in the library on designing the remodel and addition. And so I'm here today to recommend awarding of the contract to Comstock Construction. So you may be aware, the project bid last Tuesday, we received nine bids. Bids were very much in line with what our estimate was, and we were fortunate to receive a low bid from Comstock Construction in the amount of $6,243,400. And we would like to, in addition, recommend that due to the favorable bid, that we are able to recommend you take the additional ad alternate items that were included in the bid as well. Those items amount added to the base bid total up to $6,518,400, which was still well below the $7.1 million project budget and estimate. So we're here today to recommend that the project be awarded to Comstock along with the seven ad alternates.
Your Honor, I just have one question. Could you remind us of fading memories what those add-ons were again, please?
Yes, definitely. So I have a list here.
There should be a list in your packets, because we're briefly outlined.
So the seven alternates were... Alternate A1 was to provide a folding partition wall within the community room. This will divide the larger community room into smaller spaces so that it can be used more flexibly for large functions as well as smaller functions at the same time. Ad alternate number A2 was to provide a covered walkway at the plaza adjacent to the building. Within the project, we have a canopy at the entrance, but the design of the building, we wanted to have a walkway extending out towards both of the parking lots to welcome people and provide covered passage under rain and weather to the entrance. We took that out as an alternate just to protect under the bid, so we advise that is accepted. Alternate number A3 is for acoustical treatments in the large vaulted spaces of the library. These are an element that we highly recommend be part of the library. Again, they were categorized as an ad alternate to protect the bid, and so they are very functional, and we recommend they are accepted. Alternate A4 was to provide manual roller shades at the exterior windows, and the roller shades are, again, an item of the building which we would recommend that are accepted. They will be needed at some point. They were, like everything else, categorized as an ad alternate to protect the bid. Alternate A5 is a design element to provide additional wood acoustic wall treatment behind the circulation desk and in the fireplace lounge of the library. So this was a design feature that we think will benefit the overall feel of the library. Alternate A6 is to stain and whitewash the existing wood deck. If you've been in the library, there are some heavy timbers with wood deck in the gabled part of the building, and in order to brighten that up, we're recommending that get whitewashed so that it reflects light better and has an overall more airy light feel to it. And finally, the sixth, sorry, the seventh alternate was to stain the existing brick on the exterior of the building. Most of the exterior walls and brick will be removed and new walls built around what's there. However, there is a portion around the mechanical room on the northeast corner that does remain, and in order to make it blend a little bit more with the color of the new brick we've selected, we're recommending that that be stained.
All right.
So those are the seven items.
I'll offer a resolution awarding the bid to...
I will second it.
Thank you. Any other questions for Aaron or Dylan?
The addition of the ex... Are there any other things that were considered that were not added on that were taken off originally from your plan? I believe there were more things that were taken off than this.
We also had deduct alternates as part of the bid, and so those were items that, you know, we had in there to deduct from the bid if we needed to. We did a pretty extensive, when we were budgeting for the project, a pretty extensive review of the needs and what the library, you know, wanted versus needed, and in the end, we thought we had probably, you know, the best list of alternates that were acceptable that both protected the project and, you know, served the needs of the library. So did you have anything else to say?
Well, my only comment, Your Honor, would be that the, at this date, I mean, the original motion was to approve or disapprove the bid, and the add-ons are good. I also wonder if we might have time, since I don't think this is a rush thing. These can't be done, they don't need to be done by next month, but I have often entertained the idea that we should have a splash pad somewhere near the library, and we've saved a considerable amount on the bid. And I'm just wondering if we took these in two motions, if we accepted the bid first, and you can speak to this or whatever, but if it wouldn't hinder the process, if we'd have some time to look at that extra funding that we're saving, and if that could enhance the community area around the library or something else, that this maybe wouldn't be the only thing that we would add on. And so my suggestion would be that we take it in two parts. Since this isn't a rush, we have time to look at it and bring other ideas, and then next month. Would it matter, Bill, or is it tied to the bid?
Yeah, you're tied to the bid. That would be a completely separate project. I don't even know if people do that...
So this was originally, the add-ons were in the bid then originally?
Yes.
These were in the bid.
Brian, you would have, I don't think you could even do a change order for this, could you?
We can always evaluate it, but at this time, I'd recommend we proceed as presented so we can start the process of getting all the documentation, which is going to take a little time from the contractor, and get this process rolling so we can start in the fall here. But there's always opportunity in the future that we can evaluate and issue a change order, something of that nature.
Yeah, that's fine.
And if it's a site improvement, I can't remember how the contract, but I believe we have some lead time to review that.
Okay. All right. It's fine.
Any other questions or comments? I just, I guess, just for the public, you know, again, to reiterate the fact that we're a million dollars under the base bid, and we got the deducts still considerably under. And on top of that, although it can't be one of our considerations, we got a local contractor to boot. So all in all, just a great, great bid, so good work to your firm, Dylan, and Aaron. Of course, you know, good work to you as always on this project. So with that, if there's no other questions or comments, roll call, please.
Fish.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Thank you. And Aaron, you would like to speak with us for a few minutes about the temporary location for the library, is that correct?
Yes, I just wanted to take the opportunity to update the council and the public on the move into the temporary location too, so that construction can get underway. And so I just wanted to let everyone know that we are planning on starting that move on July 24th, so a week from today. I'll be meeting with the moving company tomorrow to more nail down the timeframe, but our plan is to be open by August 7th and then temporary location, if not before. And just to remind everyone that is in the Heritage Building, which is the old, old Pomida Building out on Pebble Lake Road, the actual address is 1505 Pebble Lake, and will be in Suite 400. And while we are making that move, the library will be closed, but we will be answering the phone, and the website will be available, and our e-resources will be available. So we will have staff members on hand during regular open hours to answer questions. Also, we will be able to offer public computer access at the fire hall from 10 to 5 most weekdays, Monday through Friday, and most time during the closure as well. So for individuals wanting, needing a computer access, you can go there to get that access. And then we have extended due dates on items to, so no rush, to get Fergus Falls Public Library items back to the library. That means that you get to store them for us, which is greatly appreciated. Yes, stock up. And we will have, of course, the exterior book drop will move to the temporary location on Pebble Lake Road, and the walk-up drop at the current library will be open. So there'll be, you know, a couple places for you to return books during the closure as well. And then a reminder that we are part of the Viking Library System, so you can use your library card at any of the libraries in the system. Elbow Lake and Pelican Rapids are probably our closest, so if you need to pick up holds or need some book resources, use those other libraries too. So thank you.
And Aaron, you mentioned that July 24th was the moving, the moving company's going to come, but I don't, if I'm not mistaken, on July 20th, you're going to do some personal moving, right?
You're right, yes.
Invite the public to help you move, carry some books out to the new temporary location?
Yes, we would like to welcome the whole community to come and share some remembrances, commemorate the current building. There's been a lot that's happened there in the last 30 years. A lot of us have attended Storytime in that building, so come and write your memories on the wall in the Storytime Room, enjoy some cookies. We'll have some time for those who want to share those remembrances with a larger group at 5:00. And then at 6:00, we're going to recreate the temporary move, the move to the temporary location, which was Washington School when the addition was put on the Carnegie Library. So we'll ask people to move some of their favorite books either by walking to the temporary location, and it is a little over a mile, so keep that in mind, biking, or driving some of the books to the temporary location to kind of kick off that move on the 20th. So thanks to everyone to come out and help us commemorate and celebrate.
Thank you, Aaron. Any questions for Aaron? Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Item number two, under a warning of bids, we will need a resolution awarding the bid for public improvement 5308, which is 2017 Mill and Overlay Improvement Project. Brian, you are...
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, and good evening. An hour prior to opening the library, recon... Library, excuse me, project, we opened up sealed bids for the 2017 Mill and Overlay Improvement Project. We received a total of four bids. Markley Asphalt and Paving out of Alexandria was the apparent low, and they submitted a bid amount of $185,950. The engineer's estimate was approximately $228,000. Following the bid, we tabulated the bids, everything was validated. With engineering, construction contingencies, and a few soft costs, we estimate the total project cost to be $231,350. Based on the bid prices received, I'm also requesting to add an additional 25% to the contract. 25% is a threshold I can't exceed in general, so I'm also requesting that information, that action, excuse me. This project is to be funded through our annual levied amount of $170,000 plus the remaining funds that was carried over previously from the 2016 street maintenance budget funds, and we may be using, supplementing some MSA maintenance funds to cover any gaps between the Sealco project and the annual Mill and Overlay, which you're acting on at this time. So therefore, I'm requesting a word of the construction services contract to Markley Asphalt and Paving in the amount of $185,950, and I'm also requesting authorization to add additional street segments to the base contract.
Any questions, Brian?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Anthony. Second. Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Thank you, Brian. Under petitions and communications, we'll have an update from Gene Bowman of Visit Fergus Falls on the MS tram.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. I'm Gene Bowman from Visit Fergus Falls.
Morning.
Did I say morning? And is it still Monday? I remember this morning started with a rainbow, so here we are. You know, typically, the MS tram, which is the Multiple Sclerosis Society, the ride across Minnesota, typically, they put three years in between communities hosting again, and they typically stay in each community for one night. But Fergus Falls is not a typical community, and we hosted just last year, and we're hosting for two nights. So starting on Friday morning, we'll have about 550 cyclists riding here from Wadena, and they will be staying in the Kirkbride Campground Park area. It turns into a campground for the weekend. Last year, we held it up there, and it was a huge, huge success, and they really loved it. It's a busy week, you know, all the weekends and weeks in the summertime here are busy. We've got our county fair, the Doe for Joe, DNR has a paddle fest, it's the Legends Golf Tournament, and we're hosting a state baseball tournament out at D Lagoon. So I tell you, we've got 70 volunteers lined up, and that was tough work to get all those folks to help out, but they will help make it a success, no less. And certainly, the city public works and park and rec department are huge partners in this. They help us out immensely. We provide shuttle service all day, Friday and Saturday, to get our riders out to the hotels. The hotels are full. We'll have food and entertainment in the park. Public is welcome to visit and participate in that. Friday night, the mayor will be welcoming the group at 6:00, and then the color crayons take the stage. And on Saturday night, Greg Brady's going to be spinning some records, so I don't know how he does it with technology, but it's not really records. So that'll be going on, and then by Sunday morning, about eight, by 8:00 at the latest in the morning, they're all gone, and the place is quiet, and we've got another one in the books. So we just appreciate the city allowing us to be in that space and your support. The community has been great with fundraising. This costs about $10,000 to put on. We pay for EMT service 24/7, shuttle service, and lots of different things, expenses go into hosting this, so... But we're really proud that this has been our fifth year hosting. The better we do as a host community and a bike-friendly community, the more they want to come back. So that's just really snowballing. So any questions? Yes?
Do we have some big donors to thank here for this $10,000?
Well, $5,000 is budgeted by Visit Fergus Falls, so we're the lead host, if you will. Otter Tail Power, don't put me on the spot here, I'll forget somebody, but we've got a newspaper that comes out as part of it, but I know that the hospital and Lake Region Healthcare each donated generously, and many businesses in town.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions, Gene? I know it's a great event for the community. Thank you very much, Gene, for all the work that you can do to put this event on.
Item number two, under petitions and communication, is a honoring of legislator of distinction award for Senator Bill Engelbrethson, and we received a letter from, and it's in your packets, from the League of Minnesota Cities, and I'm just going to read briefly because unfortunately Senator Engelbrethson was not able to be with us tonight, but he was selected this year as one of 14 senators as a legislator of distinction for 2017 for his work on behalf of rural communities. And just reading from the letter that was sent to the Honorable Bill Engelbrethson, I just want to read specifically, "Our members appreciate your work as the chief author of legislation fully funding health insurance for public safety officers and firefighters as well as the dependence of those killed in line of duty. We also recognize you for the many environmental provisions of importance to cities such as Stormwater Use Project, security on storm wastewater treatment facility, and for the passing of legislation that would assure cities invest in wastewater treatment facility. In order to meet environmental standards, would not be forced to reinvest in improvements until they have paid off the reasonable amount of the prior investment." So these are some things that maybe get into the weeds of the day-to-day operations of the city, but Senator Engelbrethson is down there in St. Paul working on behalf of the city for these issues, and for that, we thank him.
Just, some of you don't know it, but when we were laying out the trail, talking about purchasing the dairy, Senator Bill Engelbrethson came up here, walked the whole dairy site, took time to do that, and listened to the presentation, and then totally got behind the funding, encouraging the funding from LCC Mar and the trail concept for Glacial Edge. So he really does come and answer the call. I really appreciate Bill's work, so...
Absolutely. I think it may be, Rod, would be appropriate to thank him for that, has a resolution congratulating him on his award as a legislator of distinction and thanking him for the work that he does.
Yeah, I'd like to talk to him, yeah.
One second. Thank you, Jim. Roll call, please.
Fish.
Yes.
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 Yes. There is no open forum this evening. Under the consent agenda, we have a number of items. They're in your packet, and they're also on the board on the screen here shortly. If there's anyone who has questions or concerns with any of the items on the consent agenda would like to pull it off and talk about individually...
Would you mind if I pull up number one?
That would be fine with me. So we'll remove... Number one, anyone else have anything else they'd like to remove and discuss separately? Not, is there a resolution?
I don't like where you're on.
Thank you, Anthony. Second. Darren, thank you. Roll call, please.
Fish.
Yes.
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 Yes. The resolution is approved. Item number one is a resolution declaring surplus equipment and authorizing for its disposal. Anthony, do you have a question on that?
Yeah, obviously, these are service and disk drives. Obviously, service typically have some memory capability, and my concern was, you know, obviously data protection and should be, are we going to destroy them or are we going to sell them? And I would prefer to see them really destroyed rather than sold.
Completely understand your concern there because of that. They are being surplus because actually, we only surplus things if we're going to sell them. If they're junk, we don't have to surplus them, we can throw that away. But I know in the resolution of accounts tonight as well, there's a bill going through where our IS department, you know, had a service come in and wipe those machines, so...
So we feel confident they're clean?
We feel confident they're clean.
Right.
But I'll double check with them tomorrow. If they has any doubt, we'll hold on it, but he wouldn't surplus them. They're more worried about security than any of us. They're pretty stringent with us, so...
Good point.
I'm confident, but that's a good point.
Thank you.
Dad, Anthony, was your...
Yeah, I'll make that.
Making that resolution? Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Brent. Roll call, please.
Fish.
Yes.
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 Yes. Resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, item number one is a resolution adopting the final cost assessments for public improvement 5853. Brian, are you have anything to add to that, or...
No, I, we, the final cost hearing was on July 3rd. Nobody was present. We did receive one objection, that's also included in your packet, so at this time, it required a supermajority that was initiated, that the council initiated, so at that time, that's why we did not, we're not unable to take a vote at that time.
Sure. And explain to me, to us again, by accepting the final cost hearing, what does that mean in the process of actually, it was initiated by the city?
Yes.
Completed now?
It was initiated, 70's majority at that time was how the project was initiated, was in conjunction with Court Street Improvement Project. So it was more so driven on things that were attributed to the reconstruction of Court Street and Great Plains Natural Gas, potholes and... potholes and repairs. It just became prudent at that time, just to present that and get it initiated at the council. Because of that initiation, to accept the final cost hearing data requires the same amount.
And, Brian, is, is the cost breakdown of the special assessments to the property owners, is it, is it similar, or is it the same as it would be on a different project?
Everything is, is similar, if not the same. It was just how, how the order, how the improvement was ordered in, by petition, 100% petition, or supermajority, which was how this one was initiated.
The reason I ask is because I think there was some discussion last week just because of the, the use of the alley, if you will, that the public probably uses that alley more than they would, more than what a typical alley, and being that there's parking lots there, just a benefit to the property owners. Is that something that's, that we have, or could, or we should take into account when we make these special assessments?
That's something we are going to be looking, moving forward. This was just the practice and the policy that was prior to my time here. So, we're looking at to, yes, figure out different ways how to fund streets in general.
Okay. And then finally, I guess we did talk at the last meeting, I believe, that because it was July 3rd, public hearing, that we were going to, and we didn't have the 7/8's majority to vote on it that night, we were going to extend it over to tonight. So, if anyone is here that would like to speak to this, they're able to do that tonight, I think, is what we'll allow. Fair enough?
Absolutely.
Fair enough with the council? Okay, so if anyone would like to speak to this issue, please step to the lectern, state your name, and go ahead. Sir?
Thank you, Your Honor, and council members. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Steve Warner, and I, I think I'm the, the cause of the discussion here because I own the Lincoln Center, which is 100, represents 150 square feet frontage on that alley. And I also own the, the Union Plaza, which is the next alley down. And I'm, I'm coming for clarification and hopefully resolution. And quick background, I'm, I am not from Fergus, although I'm here more than home sometimes. I've owned the buildings for three years. We have 20 apartments in that building and eight to 10 commercial tenants in the building, and the, the public parking space is used, the alley is crossed. And the reason I, I wrote the letter and asked the question is, is I'm, I, I don't understand the, the special assessment versus the public use of, of the alley. In other words, our, our tenants and me as an owner, I don't have an advantage with the improvements of the alley, and so therefore, I just don't understand how it's split into private, you know, 325 feet of private assessment and 425 feet of public use. The users of the alley, if, if you were to observe it, they're, they're dropping off utility bills. It's a throughpass for convenience. There's an occasional food truck that'll pull up and unload its load for some, someone else on the block. I don't know. So, it's, it's really trying to understand how it was, how and why it's separated for special assessment when there's no advantage for my having that improvement as a business owner. So, I, I, and I don't know the protocol to, I, I hope you would discuss it, and I don't know if you take action on it tonight, but I'm willing to discuss it if that's appropriate. But my base, my base request is, we're, we're being made to pay for something that I think is a public use, and I don't, as I stand here today, understand why that's fair.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Rod?
Just wondering, Mr. Warner, are you, are you proposing any kind of percentage? Are you saying you don't believe you have any benefit from that, or?
Well, it...
Like 60, 40, 70, 30, 80, 20? You're saying you don't want to contribute anything to that for the apartments there?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going in, in a, I would have a debate about percentage, but I don't understand why it's any different than, than the street on Lincoln Avenue. It's a, it's a public use item, and I have, I don't understand why it gets different consideration. So, I'm here to ask you to see if you agree with me or not, and, because really, we don't, we cross it, but it, it serves no other benefit. We could cross a dirt path, and, and the tenants could get to the business and conduct the business they do inside, or the, the tenants that live in the apartments. The alley doesn't add to the, doesn't promote business. It doesn't, you know, I, I fail to see why it's different than Lincoln Avenue or Court Street or anything else.
Bill, did you have a comment?
I'll just pipe in a little bit, but Brian, correct me if I'm wrong. So, certainly, you know, we do view that that alley does certainly have some benefit to your property, to all those buildings that are backing on that alley. We often hear from a lot of businesses that, that those alleys are very important to them as well, that that's a, a major business point of their, you know, for their building as well as. So, to have that alley improved and, you know, to have that improvement right next to your building certainly has value. What I'm thinking of is that's very similar to like when you're on a residential street, and when we special assess part of that residential street, certainly not all of the street, but part of that, to the neighboring homes as well as part of their benefit. Some of that stays in the public benefit because certainly you have public driving all over the city, as well as, you know, you have public driving through these alleys, but the businesses have that benefit of having that improved alley. And if you have something else to add, but that's what I recall certainly back in.
That's, that's hot? Yes, that, that is correct, and just looking through the project data too, on how it was broken out between private property and public property, if you refer to the map that's attached in the packet, it shows it broke out per lineal footage of frontage abutting the benefiting alley. As you can see, a majority of the properties tax exempt, located on the south side of the alley, alleyway, and the senior center located in north. That, that equates to, I don't have the total, but private property is 325 lineal feet of what's being assessed out, and the city share is 425 lineal feet. So, the city is picking up well more than 50% of the total improvement project as the, as a benefit to all people.
But that would basically be the south half and then the senior center. So, it's a straight, it's a straight percentage of what the, the fronting property, correct?
Correct.
So, question, like, let's say if we were going to, we don't assess on Lincoln Avenue because that's a public use. Is that correct? Like, if we were going to redo Lincoln Ave... There's certain main thoroughfares that we don't assess because we consider them a public use.
Per our policy, well, it's not necessarily, the, the main driving factor on that is the ADT levels.
Average daily traffic.
Yes, correct. A lot of streets that over 5,000 vehicles will be 100% generally funded by the city. Local streets that don't see that type of volume, and, and we don't have traffic counts on, but we know, because they're classified as a local street, generally that's when an assessment share will kick in at that time.
Sure, sure. Well, okay, well, I guess it's up to, it's up to the council and back to the council. It would seem to me, and it is, we're in a little bit of a tricky spot because I know this wasn't your project that you initiated, and the city did initiate this project, but I, I think there's a valid legitimate argument that that's more of a public, you know, when you have two post offices and all the bill pays there, that that's primarily what that alley is used for. But that's, that's, that's my thinking. And again, I know that this, we're kind of, the project's been done, and now we're figuring out how to pay for it. This probably should have been discussed with the previous council, but.
And the city is picking up the federal courthouse, the old post office portion because you can't, that's not assessable, so that's on the city portion as part of that public right-of-way side.
Sure. And there is, there is an added benefit too for stormwater management disposal. I, I own a business in town that was flooded. The basement was flooded because of an alley. And I'm happy that the alley is now addressed and, correctly, that was 15 years ago, but I mean, it's, it's, we haven't had an issue since.
Your Honor, I asked last meeting for a, just a comparison of the traffic on that alley. Did we get any numbers?
No, I, I don't. And then that does our traffic counting. We would have to do our own traffic counts out there. Alleyways, it, it's not collected by us. We'd have to do our own, set up our own traffic count. We used to have that information, those counters, but we're still looking, looking for doing that stuff.
Yeah. Well, I, I guess that was my concern, and so I was hoping we'd come with some kind of a proposal or percentage that we would reduce his, rather than just a black and white, you know, up or down. So, I guess that's, my concern is, I, I think there is a lot of public use in the alley, and that is a little different situation than other places.
One other question. Do we, again, I know, Brian, this is asking a lot of questions to you. It's not your project, if you will, but does the city initiate this project? Was, is, do we know what precipitated that initiation of the project? Was it, was there, was there an issue with stormwater, or was it an issue with?
It was, I don't have the public improvement number. It is, dates back to some years ago when they were doing improvement with Court Street. If you recall, we did utility work up there from generally, there was other aspects, I think Vernon was included in there, but there was Court Street from the bridge to Lincoln utility replacement. But in general, Great Plains Gas, who was doing some relocations because of that project, also replaced the gas mains farther up that alleyway. But at the time, the condition of the alleyway and what they required to pothole and repair was a best practice at the time to replace the entire thing. And Great Plains Gas helped contribute their share for, for their work too as well.
Okay.
The alley was in tough shape.
Yeah, I remember that now.
I do remember that. It was, it was definitely, it was needed, if you compare to a house, the house, you know, the house needed a new, a new roof. The alley had kind of wore out, and it was time to replace.
What's the wish of the council? We have a...
Your Honor?
Yes, final cost assessment of public improvement.
Obviously, yeah, obviously, if we're going to do something for one person, we have to obviously be uniform, so.
For everybody, yes.
Yeah. So, I'd make a resolution that we in fact drop the Benjamin assessment to the property owners on that side of the street from $62.40 to $52.40, which would be about a 15 to 17% reduction.
Okay, so Anthony's...
This is just for a good face.
Anthony's say that the public, I'm sorry, the private share is dropping from 52...
From 62.40 to...
62 to 52.40?
Yeah.
Is that correct? Thank you. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it, but I would like to note that this alley has a unique usage for the city, for the residents of the city. And I want that noted because if we were saying we do it for everybody, it actually is not apples to apples with every alley in person. Hope we could add that, if you wouldn't mind?
No, I wouldn't agree with that.
Thank you.
I mean, I would agree it's got a public use, versus just, or more.
Did you have something?
Is it my place for discussion?
Sure.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm just going to circle right back to the, to the base point, which is, I mean, it is a, a public use item that has been paired or split into a, a special assessment, and I, I can't understand why that is. I mean, we don't, we didn't have a storm runoff issue before. We still don't, and maybe there's an improvement there, but I don't think that's the debate. It's, it's simply something that we don't use, and I could even make the argument, or I would try to make the argument, that it does matter, business owner to business owner. We don't have any use for a food truck to pull up and unload. So, but, but at, at the base, I would suggest and hope you would consider how that's used. We cross the alley, and we, in no way, nobody uses it in the building. They have no reason to use it. It is, I mean, I don't know if it's from a design that goes back, you know, to the horse and buggy days, and we just maintain it. And there's nothing wrong with that. But I, I also can't see why a special assessment is assessed for a general use. So, in my view, a 15% reduction is, is still far from fair.
Thank you. Any other discussion from the council?
And I just want to clarify too, I don't know if everybody here knows that three, I mean, when this first came out in 2014 was the same time that I think Steve purchased this, purchased this building. If I'm, so there was a transitional thing, so this isn't just all of a sudden now he gets his letter in June, and, you know, where was he three years ago? That's not the case. Three years ago was the exact same time that the purchase was being done. So, this isn't just, you know, this is his first knowing of it here in June with the June letter that went out. So, just so everybody's clear on that.
Sure. Okay, thank you, Darren. So, right now, we have a resolution for an amended final cost assessment of $52.40 a lineal foot for the private property along the alley. Is everyone clear on that?
Yeah, I have a question. To, to our last council meeting, is this kind of like, would he have any recourse? I mean, if we, I understand from our last meeting about a different special assessment, we have to approve the assessment, but then in the course of action of doing Yeah, I mean, does he have any other course? I mean, because this is, I agree, I mean, this is a unique situation. The project's already done. I think, you know, we have to take action on the cost hearing, but then can you come back with an amendment to, you know, look at his specific case and take action specifically on that after?
I think we're doing that, I think we, I think we're doing that this evening, right?
Well, I mean, people can always make a request for a deferment, and they'd have to give some pretty good reasons, and if it was sufficient reasons for you, you could probably agree on a, on a deferral. But I think this goes to a larger issue as developing a comprehensive deferral policy. We have a deferral policy kind of in place that talks about, you know, older people that are retired. It talks about people that are disabled. It talks about property that's being developed that hasn't had, have a need for like services for, you know...
Dick's Water Services, yes.
Yeah. Those are generally what we typically talk about with deferrals, and if you recall, the last one is specifically a property that's, that isn't developed, that hasn't been platted. It's, it's still farmland. So, I mean, yes, the answer is, he can always make that request of a deferment, but I think it goes to the larger issue of, of the council maybe needing to take a look at its deferment policy and, and letting staff know what is an acceptable deferment, so that we can talk about setting forth that policy and letting staff go with that policy so we don't have to come back and talk about deferments.
Jim, one second. Bill had a comment on that?
Yeah, staff is already in the process of working that, with that, and we're going to work with our municipal advisors from Springstead. We're looking at that. So, just going forward, because obviously, people aren't real happy about special assessments, and, so we're, we're looking at that, but that doesn't change anything as of today, so.
Your Honor, in that, real quick on that point, if you don't mind, that conversation's a bigger conversation too, not just on deferments, but on special assessments as a whole and how that policy looks. And, and I know Councilmember Hicks added a, an agenda item later on talking about a moratorium on special assessments, and that's something that we've talked about as staff as well, is putting a moratorium on until we can develop this bigger policy because obviously, we're running into a lot of issues. But like Bill said, that, that shouldn't impact the decision we make tonight. We need to act on this project that's before us.
Thank you. Jim?
The other thing is, Justin, if we look at his, then we need to look at everybody that's being assessed. I mean, we can't just pick one person and adjust theirs without adjusting everybody else's.
Okay. I, I think you could make an argument for that, Your Honor, if you wanted to, because he's the only one who made a written objection. So, at this point, he's the only one that really has any sort of recourse, if you will, in terms of challenging an assessment. But I think Councilmember Hicks' motion covered all private property and not just the property in question. That's how I understood the motion anyway.
And we have, we have a resolution in a second on the floor, so we'll call for that question shortly, but Rod, you have something?
Yeah, just as far as, you know, governance being equal and all across the board. So, on the other apartments we have downtown and areas, we're saying the same applies, right, Brian, Bill, the way we assess? Other apartments that have alleys?
We haven't, we haven't done any of the other alleys yet. They'll be coming.
Uh-huh.
Yeah. So, this is our first one.
Uh-huh.
I mean, years ago, when they were put in, I think they were probably assessed, but that was before all of our time here. So, that's where I kind of alluded to, you know, they were assessed when it was put in. It's just like our streets now, going down a residential street. You assess that out when you build it, and then 30, 40 years later, it's like putting a new roof on your house. It does wear out, and we have been reassessing a part of that, like Cleveland Avenue, for example.
So, we're not following precedent, we're setting precedent?
We have a special assessment policy where we...
I know, but for the alleys, we're setting a precedent. This is the first time we're actually acting.
Correct. So, it's a, it's a tough one.
So, we have a motion...
Resolution amending the final cost hearing from 62.40 to 52.40 for the private property.
Have a motion amending the resolution? We have a motion amending the resolution, or we have another resolution?
We have a resolution that...
Replacing?
We have a resolution changing the original cost assessment from sixty-two forty per linear foot to fifty-two forty. And we have a second on that resolution. So if there's no amending, the original resolution was made by Anthony. Any other discussion on that resolution?
Just to be clear again, it's gonna require seven votes in the affirmative to pass the resolution because it is a city-initiated project, so it does require a super majority.
And Guy and I were just talking, there might have been one other alley we're just throwing around, but I can't quite remember, so.
Roll call, please.
Fish?
Yes.
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 No.
Hicks?
Yes.
Ever?
Epstein.
So we do not have a super majority, so, well, does that mean we can bring this back forth, an amended, amended cost agreement, if you will? Sure. If the council, so we'll ask staff to look at this. Again, we're setting precedent here, so, um, I think we obviously had a good discussion on this tonight. Let's bring it back and, um, see if there's something that we can agree on moving forward because we don't have seven votes for this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, all.
Under presentation of claims, tonight we have claims in the amount of $2,997,217.16. And if there's any questions, we will direct those to the...
I to resolution professional services agreement.
That'd be a guess. We'll get to that here, right now. Resolution, professional service agreement. Mr., Brian Yvaro.
Your honor, uh, memo in front before you is in regards to public improvement, nine, seven, six, five. This is the Otter Tail Power Hoot Lake Plant Closure Engineering Study. Back in October 2nd, 2016, the city received, received a federal EDA grant in the amount of $55,000. For more information, you talked to Amy and Ryan have been the ones spearheading that on the city behalf. We received that money. The next step was to form a project management team that consists of city staff, EIC members, and Otter Tail Power representatives. We began by developing a working plan to address the potential impacts, infrastructure, environmental, and land use impacts for the plant's closure scheduled for 2021. In general, the work planned tasks have been categorized, categorized into the following before you. Task one was an infrastructure impact study. Task two, existing land use study. Task three, future land use study. Task four was a fiscal impact study. This is not all inclusive, here's or there's, it's subject to change. But we believe that task one is the initial step in the largest anticipated expenditure, expenditure, to better understand the potential implications for the, for the plant's closure. Due to uniqueness of this task, the studying of the infrastructure, we started with RFQ, Request of Qualifications Process, to determine the most appropriate consultant to do these. Um, we, they were sent out, we received three responses back, they were individually ranked with the project management team. BAR Engineering was a preferred choice of the selection group. We met with representatives from BAR and we talked about budget outlines and, and closing your packet, BAR Engineering had submitted a professional service proposal in amount of $50,000. If you please revert, review the budgetary impact for this. With all the breakdowns, what we have for secured funds thus far, we have an estimated total funding of $113,000 for this. Therefore, sufficient funds are available to accept BAR Engineering's professional services proposal in amount of $50,000. Also included in BAR's proposal, they have outlined a schedule as well, when they could be looking to do the final reporting for this. And they were looking at, uh, reporting presentation of 121817. So at this time, I'm requesting action, resolution to approve their professional services proposal to begin this process.
Thank you, Brian. Would someone like to offer that resolution?
Hello, thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Anthony.
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions of our city engineer? Rod?
Uh, Brian, I noticed EIC, Otter Tail Power and staff, are there any council members on this committee?
Anthony?
You don't count because you're on the EIC already? It's a double duty. I'm asking if anyone's, if there are any other council members?
Your honor, there's not any other council members on this committee.
So the question would be...
Good evening, council members. The composition of the working group, Anthony is there in a city council capacity, the EIC is EIC staff. So that'd be myself.
So we have a...
Just wasn't detailed out in the memo.
We have a closure that's affecting us to the tune of maybe $250,000 a year loss. Is that sufficient amount of representation? This is a significant part of the city revenue and long-term usage. I'm just wondering what, you know, what the council feels about that.
You don't trust Anthony?
I don't think that's the issue at all, Mr. Fish. I don't like to be addressed directly that way. I would say that the question is more that it's a very large proposal, and I'm just wondering if we should have more representation. Thank you, your honor.
Thanks. Rod, does any, anyone have any other further comment?
Your honor, this, this group has been meeting for several months. I mean, it was initiated by, you know, you know, I mean, I, my involvement was because I have concerns, like you, and that obviously this is a big impact to the city taxpayers, to the closure of Hoot Lake. And I was one of the drivers in seeing what we could do. And with obviously the assistance of Ryan, um, you know, we were able to get a grant. And then we solicited obviously funds from the county and as other interested parties. So, um, I mean, this, this was kind of what we came up with as, as a way to go forward.
Yeah, it's fine. And I, and I was only partly teasing you that you don't call in terms of the EIC, so no, I apologize for that. My point was really that we, we have a transition in the EIC, your honor. Um, we have a transition in the structure. And, you know, we're going forward, and if this is the council's, you know, wish, that's fine. I just wanted to raise the question, uh, you know, if we want more representation for that board or that committee, so.
Thanks, Rod. Question, uh, so task one is the infrastructure impact study, and we have a $55,000 grant from the federal government. The hundred and fif, $113,000, do we anticipate or do we know what the, estimate of what the task one through four will be? And is there further federal funding or is the 115 gonna cover the entire studies? Do you understand where I'm, where I'm going?
Sure. Mayor, um, the total cash budget is $100,000. We're using something kind for the match component of it.
Sure.
Um, we have preliminary numbers for some of the other studies, but as city engineer Yvaro mentioned, noted that the engineering is the largest component, so which is why we did that first, um, to make sure that our budget estimates were close, and, and they were. I will be, we've received, um, some general estimates for some of the other services as well, so we'll be adequately funded. And this is a preliminary engineering study that's being completed, so, you know, out of that may be some additional work, and then, then that would be the conversation about what, you know, how would we fund any implementation or execution of some of the findings.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? We have a resolution on the floor in a second for the services agreement with BAR Engineering, the amount of $50,000 for the Hoot Lake Plant Closure Study. Roll call, please.
Fish?
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Now getting back to the presentation of claims. We have claims tonight in the amount of $2,997,217.16. And if there's any questions, we'll direct those to Bill Salmar, Finance Director. If there are none, do we have a resolution approving those?
Call for that, your honor.
Thank you, Darren and Jim. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Fish?
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Your honor, board, committee, or department reports, or reports from administrative officers or staff. Under old business, we will have a downtown riverfront master plan update from Amy Baldwin, our economic improvement director.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Just providing the monthly update of progress and activities around the downtown and riverfront master plan. Last week, there was an open house held in conjunction with the Shop, Move and Groove event downtown, and we had definitely some new folks who didn't have exposure to the planning process prior, so that was really beneficial to get in front of some people who otherwise hadn't been engaged. We will be holding an advisory committee, community advisory committee meeting next week, where we'll be reviewing the revised concepts that were generated for last week's open house that in, are based on feedback and input that had been received since March, when the initial opportunity site concepts were presented to the community and various stakeholder groups. So we have those revised concepts that the advisory committee will be looking at in more detail, providing additional input and discussing next steps at the committee meeting. And as well, there is now drawings, starting to look at the public improvements, various streetscape and roadway enhancements, things like that, that were presented at the open houses as well. So we're moving forward, and we'll be talking about next steps and opportunities for additional input as we move forward, but we're on track for wrapping this project up towards the end of this year, early 18. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Amy? Well, continue to be excited about this project, so thank you.
Great, thank you.
And speaking of the Shop, Move and Groove, I hope everyone got an opportunity to be down there, but boy, talk about some positive energy downtown. That was a fun day, and, uh, wasn't enough time in the day, literally, to get to all this, all the fun stuff going on. So thank you, Amy and your crew, Gene, Lisa at the chamber, just thanks to everyone that made that day successful. We all remember not too many years ago when we had the downtown days, and they weren't so well-attended, so they've really turned that around and, uh, really hats off to them for that. Thank you very much.
I think as well, your honor, on that, we should thank all the businesses that participated this year. It was a good response from, from businesses, you know, in Fergus collectively that made, made it a success as well.
Absolutely. Make note of that. Thank you, Anthony. Item number two, as Anthony just mentioned in the beginning, is gonna be discussed in closed session to talk about potentially threatened litigation under, item number three, under old business is a dairy property update. Item A is a pro forma. Andrew, did you want to start this conversation? Bill gonna?
Yep, Bill.
Okay. Hello, good evening. And on your desks tonight, you have a fresh copy of that pro forma, because the one that came out in your packet, I'll point it out as we get down to the bottom of it, but I had a little bit of a wrong number in there. And of course, in the rush of getting it out in your packet, we find it shortly thereafter. But, um, it's way on the bottom, second to the last line, where the, um, developed site property taxes, all jurisdictions, that is based on an estimated market value of 11.7 million. I had, um, in error, put in 4.7 on your, the one that first came out. So a significant difference there, wanted to point that out from the start. But, um, we've had a group working on looking at this dairy site and, um, you know, with the goal of going towards, um, drafting a purchase agreement. And this, um, group wanted to get this information before you that shows, just kind of try to throw it out in some black and white terms, what we're looking at, how many acres, what kind of cost could we be looking at, and what's some of the benefit then of having that property redeveloped. So I'll just walk down this, and some of our members, certainly, Andrew, you're in the group, Anthony is working on this, and Steve Erickson is here with us tonight, so, and Kent Mattson here as well. So pipe in if I miss something as I go, but, um, we'll just walk down this sheet. Starting off with, certainly you all know where this is, it's the old Mid-Am Dairy Site, so just located over here on the river. The number of acres we're looking at is 28.8, and then there's a railroad spur there of about half an acre, so a total of 29.3 acres. How could that be used? So kind of looking at that, as you're aware, from, um, the LCCMR grant that we've been working with over the last year or so, there is land segregated under that grant agreement of 16.6 acres. So that's that 16.6. Infrastructure then of 2.2, and then, uh, you could say your tax revenue generating portion of 10 acres then, that would be available to sell off for development or, or to develop in some, some manner. So preliminary cost estimates, looking at possible land acquisition of $1 million is what we've talked about, you know, throughout with that owner. Consultation, that's various expenses we've had to date of $42,990. Legal, an estimate up there of $12,005. The survey, the ALTA survey, which has been completed for $6,200. And then we get into the environmental. Phase one, which we have already completed at $24,285. Phase two, which, um, Brian, I think you'll be talking about that at the next item here, isn't it? For $66,000 is that phase two. Phase three would be 210,715, with cleanup costs of $430,000, subtotals down there to 731. Demolition then of $900,000. And then we put in a contingency of 15 percent, and what that is based on is the phase three of the environmental, plus the cleanup, plus the demolition. So that was, um, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, but that's where Braun Intertech was recommending to add a 15 percent contingency, is what you base that on, coming to a total of 2.9 million. So then we look at possible funding sources. The one thing we know at this point is that LCCMR grant award at $600,000. We did receive two donations totaling $10,000 that kind of started our whole process off. And for the purposes of tonight, I just lumped the rest of it into financing of 2.3 million. So certainly, if you as a council want to go forward with this, we'll have to dig into that a little bit more and see what that financing, but that's what we'd have to come up with at this point for the city. Potential income, so if you're looking in the bottom section, estimated market value, this is, if you had a clean site, those buildings are removed, you, you make it a green site, that's 2.5 million dollars. Ben?
Is that for the 29.3 acres?
Yes, right, Steve? The 2.5 is for the whole, the whole parcel, so...
28.8.
28.8. So that 2.5, from that, you know, you'd have your trail out of there, which is that non-taxable portion, because that's, becomes like public park usage. So that comes from the appraiser, I believe, and Steve, you probably talked to the appraiser, so that's, um, where that number comes from. Then we get down, this is now, um, the next two lines, we know these numbers because we, you know, went right to the Otter Tail County Property Tax Section and pulled up, right now, its estimated market value is $496,000, all taxing jurisdictions, so that would be the county, the school district, the city, and the HRA, for $9,538 is what's being collected. Of that, the city portion is $3,615. Now, those bottom two lines are assumptions, certainly. We looked at new construction of apartment buildings of about 60 units. We looked at apartment buildings that were constructed across the river of nice quality, that 24-unit building, so that's kind of what I'm using for comparison there. But looking at that, projecting that out, if it was 60 units then of apartments, so probably three buildings put on that 10-acre site, would possibly be estimated market value of 11.7, not the first one that came out, that's my error that went in there. Calculating that out would generate property taxes for all jurisdictions of $177,000, of which then the city would be $81,000, so, um, that, we just kind of wanted to get all that out in front of you so you can kind of see on a big picture of what we're looking at. So I don't know if any others of you from the team want to speak up to that, but that's kind of what I had for you tonight, is just to kind of show that out to you. I know we'll have further discussions about the Braun proposal, so.
Um, on the, that estimate, is that a residential estimate, or is that industrial, or is that what kind of...
That's residential. It's basically like three, very market value, above market value probably, or market rate rent apartment buildings. So 60 units is what we, what we did. We took the new apartments across the river and take, took that down to a per unit, and then expanded that out to 60 units. So pretty simplistic... So, pretty simplistic view, but just kind of a guess at this stage, so.
And then just a clarification, I remember on the grant, when we presented that, I worked on it, that the 16 acres were allowed for trail and riverfront protection, and there were some amenities allowed within that beyond the trail. So, I think it should be noted that it isn't only just pure trail, that there are certain things we could have along there that weren't, like not a swimming area, but I'm talking, not a minute, I'm talking about like bike repair station, or something like that, or...
Yeah, they took out everything unrelated to trail use and the environmental protection from the trail down to the river.
They took that out later?
They took every, we had a park, we had a splash pad, and they took those off.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, you did recall correctly, though.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
Just to clarify for that, Mr. May, was, then it can only be used for trail, it can't...
The trail and environmental protection related to the trail and down toward the river, so it would be rain gardens and native plantings.
Right, so we couldn't have anything?
No.
What about art?
No, no.
Right.
We, you know, I think once it's in place, we probably put some art in there, but not related to the costs of the LCCMR.
Steve, did you have something? I see you had to add on.
Yeah, I'll clarify something about the 60 units. That was actually my number, and the 60 units was a direct comparison using the River Oaks Landing Site, and when that was developed, there were 24 units put on there, approximately 4.8 acres of land. They weren't able to develop fully to what they could have put on the site, because there's a greater setback from the river, because there's a bluff. Also, there's a sewer line there that doesn't have the capacity to handle something bigger, so what they built was 24 units. To try to give a conservative estimate of something, instead of looking like a huge number of potential profit, what I did to come up with 60 units was simply to take the prorated number of units that River Oaks did on their 4.8 acres of site, and put that on to the 10 acres. That's how you got the 60. You could have said, well, theoretically, you could build 150 units on the site, but I didn't want to take it theoretical, I wanted to take a building that's already there, and you look at it, and you can say, well, we know we can do that. So, that's where that number is. And performance are based on the numbers that we have today, trying to give you maybe a worst-case scenario, as opposed to something that sounds overly flowery, and that was how it was done. And so, the concept is to take that, those numbers, and then improve them as we gather more information.
One question, and I'm not sure if it's for Steve or Bill, the, Anthony, the $430,000 cleanup, is that part of the Braun estimate? Where do we get that number from?
That number was done as part of the Braun work in 2016, and they did a number of different things, including trying to estimate the amount of asbestos in the building, for example, and there were some other items in there, including mercury removal of some containers of hazardous substances that were in there, some estimates of what it might be to clean up, something else, and I don't remember exactly what it was. The people that answered with $430,000 have never been in the building. They took the volumes that Braun came up with based on their testing, and said, if you were going to remove it, and here's where it's located, what would it cost? And so, they again made an estimate. And, you know, in my viewpoint, they gave the best answer that they could, but the studies were not continued beyond that to try to refine that down, so. Some of those numbers may not even be appropriate anymore, so.
Steve, is it my understanding that the mercury has been removed now?
It has been removed from there. The seller has maintained that they're in the process of getting a certification from the MPCA to verify that it has been cleaned up.
Steve, would you just like to address the range on the demolition numbers?
Well, the, I'm actually let Brian talk about that, because he was the one that got the numbers, but as my understanding was, the, there were two more recent bids, or I'll say they're proposals, they're not bids, proposals for demolition. The first one was around $650,000 from Vite Company, they're out of, I think, Monticello, Rogers, and very, very capable company, and they gave a proposal. Their proposal was based on the assumption that they would crush on-site, and the hole that's for the basement under one of the buildings would be filled in with crushed concrete. Well, you don't want to do that, so that number's got to be refined. That would, it would probably cost more than that in order to do it, because of how they gave their proposal. The second one, I believe is from Landwear, they're out of St. Cloud, and I want to say that that was 740,000, something like that, for theirs. The 900,000, I think, was an earlier number, that was a combination of several different in saying this is the average. I mean, the real answer to how much does it cost to demolish something is when you get a bid, just like for the library, you make an estimate, and then you get a bid, and depending on the conditions at the time, if there is more, if there's more work available than workers, you're going to get a high bid, if there is less work available, you're going to get a lower bid. So, the hope is that as we go through this process, we're start, we're able to refine these pro formas, so that you know where you are, as opposed to, you know, our best estimate right now, on a conservative basis, this is where we think we are.
Justin, do you have a question?
Did we, are we in the phase yet where we, there was some probing down on the property up on the, I mean, northwest side? Have we got any more?
Yeah, that all goes back to the studies that were done last year, and there was an environmental company, WCEC, I believe, was retained, and as you look at aerial photographs of the property, you see some what appears to be chunks of concrete sticking out. And the city had WCEC look to see if there might be some contamination there, they did not look at it for soil stability and buildability. So, the result of that was that there are some heavy metals that are in that area, but they're to a level that don't fall within the federal disallowable limits, and so the report said, well, those may be naturally occurring. But there are only three test borings done, and you're talking about something about the size of that bottle of water, where you go down to take a soil sample, and it's like looking for a needle in a haystack. The thought process of going forward is to try to answer two questions. The first is, are there other areas that might be suspect for environmental issues? And what is the underlying, what is the bearing capacity of the soil? And that's really done more by a backhoe with some isolated testing, and that's really in the Braun proposal of services, is to study that.
Thank you. Any other questions of Brian, or Bill, or Steve on the pro forma? Thank you, Steve. Item number, item B under number three of the dairy property is a resolution accepting phase one of the Braun Intech Environmental Assessment Proposal. Brian, if you want to speak to that?
Yes, thank you, honor. As you, we had just discussed in regards to the dairy project, if this council chooses to proceed, before you is Braun Intech's proposal for phase two in regards to this project. Please note, this proposal here is not just in consideration of the environmental. As Steve and Mr. Erickson had mentioned, we are looking to do some preliminary geotechnical evaluation, A, number one, if they're suitable or unsuitable materials, and part of that, we're going to be doing some grid pattern to try to thoroughly more map and understand what is taking place, or what is present on this site. In regards to the other aspect, the environmental, yes, at this time, the phase one was to understand the presence of certain constituents' contamination. This phase two basically is essentially what we're doing, is tracing now, to help better understand and perhaps apply a volume to the potential contaminants. As mentioned, we've talked about mercury, we're going to be doing some further sampling, some environmental remediation, everything, but I just want to note that this is all manageable items, too, as well. On the pro forma, I was looking through my notes there as well, if the owner was going to be taking care of it, that 430,000, I believe, approximately 50,000, and I'll double check, was for mercury cleanup, so that is one number we got to review, and as Steve mentioned, we'll go through this process. Task five on Braun's is to take all the information we have thus far and start applying more refined cost estimates to the whole demolition abatement of this property. So, at this time, it's requested for the next phase is $66,000. That would be not to exceed, because part of the process we've discussed is that the owner would be responsible to identify or remove stored liquids that are currently housed on-site, so that would be a deduct as shown right now.
Thank you, Brian. Does this, does this phase of the plan from Braun give us an indication of whether or not that site, the 10 acres that we, you know, that we've identified, is buildable? Is that kind of, is that the bottom line of this?
That's generally what the geotechnical report was, N-value, yes, material stiffness, and number one, if it's buildable material. It'll identify if it's a heavy organics or suitable material as well. That's what the boring with grid patterns and everything was, help tell us what type of material it is, and perhaps if there is any further contamination there. Essentially, that is what the geotechnical in this.
I think also, it would help us define what, that obviously we've got, obviously the LCCMR grant, which obviously requires, you know, up to 16.6 acres. If there was land that wasn't suitable for building, then we could possibly look at, including that land, obviously within the LCCMR, you know, portion, and get better utilization of the actual land itself.
Any other questions of Brian? Steve?
I do want to remind everybody, but that no money is going to be spent unless there's a signed purchase agreement. So, this isn't money to be spent now. This is, if a purchase agreement is acceptable, then this is a process that would be, you would be going through, and this, these are the numbers that you would be looking at.
Okay. So, this phase one is contingent upon a purchase agreement being signed by both parties?
Yeah.
Any other questions of either Steve, or Brian, Bill, Andrew, any staff?
I mean, just kind of a question, I don't, obviously, we're going to go into a closed session to discuss that, so should we postpone this until after that discussion? Do we accept this on the, with the proviso, that assuming that the, if the, you know, if the purchase agreement is agreeable, then, then we go ahead? How do you want to handle it?
Contingent on? Well, it's contingent now, I mean, is that, that's accurate, I mean, I don't have any reason to question that, but that's, is that in the resolution, does it state that?
If you state it that way, great, well.
Sure. So, I mean, if it states that in the resolution, then I guess our real decision is in the negotiation of a purchase agreement, whether we go forward with this, correct?
Kent, are you working on this agreement as well with? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, so you've looked at everything, and you're moving forward with it so far. You've been doing the contact with?
With Braun?
Yeah.
No.
Mr. Furman, with Mr. Furman, or?
I have not, I've been working on purchase agreement that we've discussed.
Okay, all right.
So, what are the wishes of the council? What should be contingent on the next step? Purchase agreement favorable?
Somebody will have to make a resolution.
So, we'll have to make, is there a resolution to offer the resolution contingent, amending if it's not already in the resolution, that it's contingent upon the signing of a purchase agreement?
I'd make the resolution accepting the phase one Braun to take environmental assessment proposal for not to exceed $66,150, subject to approval by the city council of the purchase agreement on set property.
Resolution, is there a second to that, Tom? Thank you. Further discussion, questions? If not, roll call, please.
Fish?
Yes.
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 Yes. Resolution is approved. Under new business, we have a number of items that were added. Number one, what I have is ordinance on use of, and then the next word starts with a U, but I don't know what the next one is.
Drones.
D, that's a D, I guess, drones, all right.
Obviously, do you want me to just go for it? And obviously, at shop move and groove, Chamber Cafe, first thing in the morning on Thursday, there's a gentleman, obviously, started up a business, obviously utilizing drones, and I wanted to ask staff if we, and he spoke about cities having ordinances for use of drones within that, obviously airspace, and I was curious as to whether we have such an ordinance, and if not, should that be something that we, that we look at and encompass? As there are certain FFA rules dedicated to the use of drones.
There aren't any ordinances in place addressing drones currently. Are you wanting us to kind of look into that a little bit, and come back with a recommendation on drones, reform, or are you against them?
I think, I think the part, more than anything, is the legality of it. You have to have, you have to have a license to operate a drone from the FFA, like an airplane, and so...
That's if it reaches, I knew a guy who just had one here, the last, they have to be able, a drone that can reach a certain height. If they can't reach that height, then they're not required to be registered.
So, but I just think we should clarify what they are, so if it's possible to ask staff to look at that, I would be grateful.
Do a motion instructing me to look into that for you?
I would offer a motion to instruct the city attorney to look into ordinance for use of drones within city airspace.
I'll second that.
All fair, the motion say aye?
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Item number two is moratorium on special assessments, Anthony?
Yeah, again, I think, you know, and obviously, I know this one was a slightly historical discussion today on the alleyway, but I'd like to kind of offer that we stop and have a moratorium on doing any more projects that involve a special assessment until staff has time to review the current ordinances and codes that we have in place, so that we don't fall foul on some of these issues that, we've faced like three or four of these issues just lately, and, you know, the easiest way is to just stop the bus and take a breath and look at what we're doing.
Your honor, staff would be in support of that as well. I do want to make note that we do have a petition that has been submitted, that's a partial petition for a road reconstruction, so it would be nice if we were to take this action, that we could have an answer for that party, that we are issuing the moratorium, and we will be revamping the assessment policy, and then we'll give them the indication as to what that is, and if they want to proceed with that petition at that time. But we've been more or less kind of sitting on it, because we know we have to change our policy, or we're going to continue to get challenged on these assessments, so this is the right step to allow us to do that.
And, yes, and we've been updating costs on that existing one, too, as well, so that's taking a little bit of process, but we do have an active one currently right now, that's with the key... one currently right now, that's with the Keepers Developments. You've seen that petition, you, that was 100% petition, just so you're aware of that one. You may see other, as we close out, try to close out some other projects as well, so...
And that, Your Honor, I would make that, not telling you what to do, but it would be nice if the, the resolution could include that the projects that have already been initiated, we could continue to, to work on those, like the one Brian just mentioned, and finding a resolution of the one that we acted on earlier tonight, but certainly going forward, we'd be in support of that.
So your resolution be a moratorium, any future...
Correct. On any future ones, obviously, anything that's in the works.
It would be a motion instructing the city attorney to draft an ordinance, and I'll bring that back to you next time.
I would like to make the ordinance, yeah, I'd like to make the motion to instruct the city attorney to create an ordinance for a moratorium on all special projects going forward, special assessment projects.
Second.
Second? Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. And then the third item is, Anthony, you wanted to talk about crime neighborhood associations?
Yeah, obviously, we, we seem to have kind of, and obviously, unfortunately, Kyle's not here, and I, I could have spoke to him about it, but we, we seem to have sort of an increase in some, you know, petty crime and some assaults and violence. I mean, obviously, this weekend was, you know, obviously, you know, you know, discharge of guns, and there was a couple of domestic violence things where the police get called to. And, you know, obviously, in a lot of more rural communities, they have neighborhood kind of watch and set, things set up where, you know, people are made aware of, vigilant, and signs that say this is a, you know, a neighborhood crime watch area. I, I would probably like to ask if we could instruct, you know, Chief Burgum in looking into, is there any support to, you know, how do we go about starting to get people involved in, you know, being more aware of their community and supporting the law enforcement in, you know, getting calls to the police, you know, before these things escalate into, into potentially more violent situations?
I think that's a good idea. I know there are some...
There's a lot of, there's a lot of, you know, petty crime going on, I mean, there's a lot of garages that have been broken into, you know, so it's more about how do we go about it.
Yeah, we, we've had that before, and the police did lead it, there was a resulting neighborhood watch effort, they would have neighborhood meetings.
Yeah.
And I'm sure that they'll, they could follow that same pattern that they did before.
So if we could instruct Kyle to dig out, to stuff up the files and see what we need...
Give a presentation on what our options might be?
As possible.
Thank you, Anthony, those are all three.
Did I think of this weekend?
What's that?
I was doing too much thinking that weekend.
And then, as far as the dog park update, is that something that we're prepared to narrow, could we ask in two weeks or at our first meeting in August if we could bring the dog park, some, some discussion on where we're at with that?
Yeah, I think it's, it's timely, Your Honor, just because we've got this long-term planning and we're looking at options for our parks, and I think there are people and visitors and others in town that would like to, like us to consider that in some sense, so.
Just, just want to comment on, on the dog park, I mean, that was one of the other, you know, on, on the project that was downtown on Shop Moving Grove, where, you know, granted the, you know, the Aqua, you know, water park got the most votes, a lot of people put up stickers about dog parks.
Sure. I heard there was one council member that was picking up dog waste down at the Shop Moving Grove.
That's why that council member sort of brought this up, yeah, a large amount of dog waste.
I heard he was very good at it, I heard that.
I was just taking, I was just taking cards off people, putting it on the board.
All right.
I'd like you to poop pick on next time.
Before we adjourn to a closed meeting, I just wanted to touch on something that Anthony said, you mentioned, there was, we had a very difficult incident over the weekend that included the SWAT team and a discharge of, of weapons, and I heard from multiple people secondhand over the weekend just commending what an outstanding job our police department did handling that, and I heard firsthand this morning, and they said the same thing, that first rate, they handled a very incredibly difficult situation professionally, and they diffused the situation, and everybody exited that situation with their life, so in a time that there's a lot of tension nationwide between law enforcement and, and society, it seems, it's nice to know that we, as a community, have the confidence and the relationship with our police department to feel safe and have a level of trust, so I just wanted to say, say thank you to Chief Burgum and all the police department for the job they do every day, and especially the job they did this last, past weekend, so.
With that, we will adjourn to a closed meeting, as permitted by the attorney-client privilege, to discuss active threatened litigation as well as real estate negotiation regarding dairy property.